So you could take it the other way.
Yeah, I'm asking where's mine?
No, that wouldn't be a conference.
Yeah, this conference is a brush.
No, that actually isn't a conference.
No, it's not. I know.
Yeah. The plan has to trust the centers for onusphere for it to be a nice recovery.
Okay.
Now that we've solved that, I'll call it into our. Then McHenry County's zoning board of appeals. The purpose for our hearing today is application twenty twenty-four dash zero one three. It's the applicant is Seams Memorial Park Incorporated at the request is for an A-one agricultural district to an A-one agricultural district with a conditional use permit for a park. The address of this property is one six seven one one High Bridge Road, Union, Illinois, and the property identification number is seventeen dash zero three dash one hundred dash zero zero three. It's located, it's thirty and a half acres and located on the south side of High Bridge Road, approximately one thousand three hundred and twenty feet east of the intersection of High Bridge Road and Olson Road in Coral Township. I'll have the zoning board members introduce themselves to begin with the hearing starting right, Mr. Jurors.
Tom Jurors, Coral Township. Kurt Schnovell, Riley Township.
Vicki Gartner, Nunda Township.
And Linnea Couster from Alden Township.
Charlie Eldredge, Richmond Township. Bob Cozen, Algonquin Township.
Jessica Beverly Door Township.
The publisher's certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated July ten, twenty twenty-four. The affidavit of posting was signed and the date posted was July fifteen, twenty twenty-four. The affidavit of mailing was signed and the date mailed was July third, twenty twenty-four. All meeting ordinance requirements. The survey has been checked against the petition, legal notice and publication in the newspaper and all three match. The filing fees have been paid. The endangered species consultation was not required for this petition and the McHenry County Soil and Water Conservation District report has been received. That would be NRI number L twenty-four zero twenty-three forty-five seventy-nine. At this time, anyone who would be thinking they were going to be speaking or asking a question of the petitioner, I would swear you in. So if you'll be speaking at all, please raise your right hand.
Probably.
Oh. I would thought you were just referring to the other people.
Do you solemnly affirm the testimony you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay, so for members of the public, how this hearing works is we'll hear the testimony and the part of the petitioner. Then the board members will ask questions and staff. And then if you as a member of the public have a question, you'll be allowed an opportunity to ask questions of their testimony. Then after we get the report from staff, if you have a comment at that time that you would like to give regarding this petition, you'll have an opportunity to do that as well. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the petitioner.
All right.
Please introduce yourself and your position as.
Do you need me to stand? Do you want me to sit?
No, no, no.
If, for most of you haven't met me, my name is Jay Fuller. I am a member of the park board for Seams Park. We are looking to make some really radical changes to this park. So when you look at the picture up there, it's under the word petition. We're talking about the upper right-hand portion of the property. The crosshatched portion is off floodplain. Most of the upper right-hand is also off floodplain. So what we would like to do, right now, there is a shelter there. There's a baseball field. Got two ponds. We're gonna, we want to clean out the smaller pond, improve it, and we're gonna add an aerator so that it's a functioning pond. And then we were, we want to add a basketball court, some pickleball courts, and another shelter. All that would be in the upper right-hand corner. So this Seams Park has been a park for approximately seventy-some years in this location. I wouldn't have chosen this location because it's floodplain, but that's where we are. Was started by a man named Bill Seams. He funded it and we're still operating off of that funding. So far to date, on this project, we have gotten permits from IDNR, Illinois Archaeological, Wetland Inventory people, and I don't know, there's probably been three or four permits that we've gotten so far. Zoning was one of the requirements for the county ultimate permit. We also have to give a slight variation for compensatory storage, and it's a very small amount and my understanding is it will be recommended as we move dirt around to make this work. The park is frequently underwater. When I put the sign up, it was under about six inches of water. We close the gates when that happens until it dries up. But it gets a fair amount of use, especially on the weekends. People have outings there, family outings and things like that. As I said, we're only looking to add park-like activities, so we feel that it's consistent with the park that's been there for seventy years. My understanding of the county's explanation is this hearing was necessary because we're expanding the use. I don't know that I agree with it, but that's the position.
Do you have the Plata survey that you could just kind of show us on the Plata survey up there, what you're gonna be doing?
Uh, do I?
It's up there now, Jay. Do you just wanna go up there and just kind of?
Just point about. Oh, okay. All right, so this is the Plata survey. This is just the upper right-hand portion of the total property. And one of the reasons that we're going through all of the processes for the whole acres, acreage, and not just up there, is because there are some programs for things that you can do in wetlands that if we can work something out, we don't wanna have to go through this again. So the existing shelter is right here. The baseball field is here and that will be retained. We're just gonna change the direction that it faces. This is the pond we're gonna clear out, clean up. This is the other pond. Upper, the pond in the left-hand corner of this drawing is the existing pond, and the lower left-hand corner is the pond that's gonna be widened. In the upper right-hand corner is the basketball court. Below that are pickleball courts. The in-between will be a shelter and then we're gonna add some more parking. Most of this area is out of the floodplain where these items will go, or at least very close to out. So the plan is to take a few inches of dirt from here and move it up here to conform with these flood regulations. I'll go through the standards and then ask for questions if that would be all right. We believe we can meet all the standards. We have funding and I think we meet them all anyways. The site is compatible with the existing use that has been there for seventy years. It's not consistent with farmland use, but it's not incompatible. We take all the water that the farmlands produce and that drains towards the river and it goes across our park and we haven't done anything to interfere with that. We don't, we believe that this is beneficial to the public health, safety, and I guess morals, comfort, general welfare of the neighboring vicinity since it's park. We don't believe it will be injurious to or interfere with anyone else's property in the area. Should not have any impact on property values as all the farm, all the property is farmland. There are adequate utilities. We do have electricity to the park and we have a porta potty. The road is not highly traveled, so the use, the ingress and egress should be no problem. And we will comply with whatever restrictions are in the A-one agricultural zoning district and whatever the board wishes to impose. We believe it's in the public welfare because it's a park. And groundwater recharge and groundwater quality have been meticulously investigated for this project. And to date, I've received no objection from any agency that, other than the stormwater, which needs a hearing for the additional cap, the small variance in compensation of any objection to groundwater problems. I guess I have nothing further. Do you have questions?
We'll start with questions, am I right, Mr. Jurors?
Just. Just wondering, Mr. Fuller, will there be any talk of installing any lighting on these courts?
Any what?
Any lighting, even nighttime lighting?
Uh, to date, no, because we have not wanted to encourage nighttime use. So we have no plans for lighting at the moment.
Is the park generally locked at night?
Yes.
About what time would you say? Dusk?
Yeah. It varies. It's, right now, it used to be someone went out there and physically locked it. But at the moment, we have an electronic gate, electric gate, and it closes automatically.
Very good, thank you.
My only question is the difference between the Plata survey and the site plan. On the Plata survey, it shows a, the entrance to the park at the north, coming south, looping around, and going all the way back up to the north. And the site plan, it doesn't show that that road continues past the smaller pond. Does it or not?
It does, yeah.
It doesn't. So on the Plata survey, that's in error then?
Uh, no. The site plan.
That's the site plan, right?
This is the site plan, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the site plan is in error. There is a driveway that goes. And I know, just so we're talking about the same thing, this is what it shows on the.
Yeah.
I will have the site plan corrected.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. No, it's as big a loop as it's coming back up north.
It's a circular drive.
Yeah.
Yes. I just have one question, Jay. It is standard policy of the county to limit conditional uses to ten years. If this board were inclined to recommend that there be no time limit on your conditional use, would you be in favor of that? Absolutely. And I would, if you won't consider no time limit, I would ask for twenty, at least, but whatever the board feels is appropriate. Okay, that's my only question. The park's not going away. This isn't a park. I mean, it's not wealthy, but it's not a park that will run out of funding in ten years and will go somewhere.
Mr. Cozen.
Well, thank you. Since we left the, or focused on the site plan, there's a wooden foundation around an irregular shape of objects between that loop area. What was that wooden foundation for? It's identified as a site plan, called a wooden wall or a foundation wall.
Where would it be?
Uh, there's that irregular shape object between the loop.
Yes.
Yes, and it's called a wooden wall. What was that situation? Is that square bench?
Yeah, there's a bench.
I don't know if, and what is the land use to the east?
I'm sorry?
The land use to the east, what is it?
Uh, farm. Yeah, and it does produce a lot of water and all drains towards the park.
And so therefore, there's no dispute with the note that says the entirety of property is located in a floodplain? There's a note on the site plan that says that. Do you have no? I don't know if you wanted to.
Uh, my understanding.
This is the first note on the site.
For all of the discussions I've had is the upper right-hand portion, I don't know where the delineation is, but, and it may, yeah, that the upper right-hand portion is out of the floodplain.
Right, so another thing to ask those who prepared the site plan, because their note, first note, says the entirety of the site is located in a floodplain.
Okay.
And that may.
So the entire site and the loop?
Yes. I don't know if this is something that, or maybe you could explain in terms of your design. There's two radiuses around the relocated baseball back fence. Why were those radiuses created?
Two radiuses?
Right. So you see the new relocated fence and there's two radiuses, the dotted line.
Oh, these two?
Yes.
Uh, I assume that's predicting where the outfield fences would go if there was outfield fences?
One of them then intrudes into your compensatory storage dry area.
I'm sorry?
One of them intrudes into your compensatories area.
Yes. My understanding is that the design calls for a very gradual drop so that it shouldn't interfere with baseball.
I don't know if these are questions of you or of staff. Is there a particular setback from the eastern lot line to the back end of the basketball court? And does this meet that?
Well, a setback that's on here is, I believe, incorrect. If it's the same, if it hasn't been.
It's sixty-five feet.
Oh, that was corrected then, because there was one version where it was much shorter.
So that is.
I don't, I don't know what the setback requirement is. I don't, my understanding is in ag, most of the setbacks are ten feet. But that, my staff, I'm sure, could answer better.
Okay, and that'd be a likewise question relative to the setback for the future pickleball court, which is thirty-nine feet.
Well, maybe that's the one that was incorrect, because the pickleball courts more, were just, there's room for future expansion, but the existing pickleball courts are more than sixty-five feet because they're farther west than the basketball court.
One last zoning question. Would you know if the setback for the pillars that are on either side of the driveway conform with permitted obstructions in the front yard?
Uh, no. Well, number one, I don't know what the setback is. They are at least fifteen to twenty feet off the highway. Because there's a ditch there, or you walk, go down the ditch and come up and then you get to the fence. But those pillars have, again, been there probably for, I don't know when they were built, but I would assume fifty, sixty years minimum.
Right, but you recently, you testified that they have been renovated to allow for electrical gate system.
Pardon?
That they, they now allow for electrical gate system. Are the, is the electrical gate attached to the pillars or is that further down the road?
No, it's attached to the pillars.
So the.
Yeah, all we did was add arms to the gate that was already there and it functions just as the original gate did.
Thank you for.
Okay. Mr. Beckham?
Thank you. Just to backtrack on your testimony, the compensatory storage area variance that you need will be before the Soil and Water Conservation District Board, right? Has nothing to do with us.
I don't hear well, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. The, the variation that you have to see will be before a different board, it's not before us.
Correct.
Right.
We have to go in front of soil, stormwater.
Okay.
And it's, it's in the neighborhood of one or two hundred cubic feet. I mean, we're not talking much.
Right. And that's just to be in compliance with the stormwater ordinance and all, okay. The other question I got is actually for staff. If the park changes its mind and decides they would like to do evening lighting, they would be subject to the terms of the UDO for a permit? Correct. Okay, that's all.
I have one more question. You have another question?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
No, go ahead.
Are you planning on adding more portable toilets once the other improvements are made?
I don't, I mean, actually, we're looking at that question now already, and if we need to, we'll get to it.
Okay.
We have, we have funding for that.
Okay, thank you.
Staff, do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Cozen?
I'm sorry, when you said displacement, again, the site plan says that you're displacing eight hundred and twenty-five square feet of wetlands. How does that reconcile with only a couple hundred feet for compensatory storage?
Square feet and cubic feet.
Ah, thank you, sir.
Oh.
I have no questions, so we'll move on to, does any, staff, does any have any questions?
No questions.
Any member of the public have a question on his testimony? Okay, if you'd stand up and identify yourself and then the address where you live.
On the pond, they said they're.
They want you to identify yourself.
George Standish. I own all the property on the, on the south side of Seams Park.
Okay.
And they said they're gonna change the pond there. And what are you gonna do with the pond?
We're going to deepen it, create a shelf. There's a, there's all kinds of pond requirements, if you ever build a pond. We're gonna, we're gonna build a shelf, you know, shallow shelf, and then deeper, and then add an aerator. Not significantly.
If you block up that, that pond, that's gonna force the water all over on the people that own to the east of us, and that's gonna flood that river way up. You gotta let that water flow through there.
Oh, we're not gonna interfere with the water flow.
If you build it up, you will.
We're not building up, we're not building up around the pond. We're digging into the pond. And all this, all of the soil that's removed from the pond has to be removed from the site. It's not being added as a.
As it gets built up, that's the main thing.
Right, but anyways, when it, when it floods there, it floods over the pond. The pond is actually a foot below the top of the flood, so we wouldn't interfere with that anyways.
But that's what I mean, if you build that up, then it will. You see what I'm getting at? No, if you build up around the pond.
Oh, we build a wall up, yes.
Yeah, then, then you're gonna block that tile up and you're gonna force the water back into the fields and it will force water back over on the south, all the property into the south.
But you're not doing that, are you? Um, there is a tile that goes into that pond.
Yes, there is.
And that will be allowed to discharge water as it normally would. But we don't believe anything that we're doing will interfere with the water flow from the east. That's, that's not the intention. The intention is to put fish in that pond so people can fish there, because it's a big.
That's fine, I have no problem with that. But if you build that pond up at any place.
Right.
You're gonna force that water back into the fields, all the farm fields, just back to the south and to the east of it.
Right. I don't know that I agree with that, but in any event, we're not gonna build up the pond. Every bit of dirt that comes out of that pond has to be removed.
That's fine, that's, that's no problem. I have no problem with that at all. The way we're, if you block up that tile though, I mean, that's, that's a big tile. That is not a small tile.
Well, that tile's already blocked.
Well, if it's blocked, then the people should be taking and cleaning that out.
That's one of the things if we ever get a permit, we'll do at the same time. But, yeah, we're not gonna interfere with the tile. We know it's there.
What are you gonna do with the people, the extra people? Are they gonna let them just run there because there is no fences around there?
Well, in our experience, people rarely leave that immediate area. There is.
No, they don't. They come over on our property many times.
Really? From the park?
Yes.
And they, they go through the park and come, because it's usually very.
You got a bench just right on where the fence line there, where they can sit and rest or fish or whatever they want, which is fine.
Uh-huh.
But then they come over on our property from there.
Well, your property is significantly farther south than that drawing shows, because, let's see, there's, the property in depth is thirteen hundred feet. Approximately half of it is below that area, so it's six hundred feet to come all the way through here to get to your property. They'd also have to, yeah, and this is all.
You got, you got, you got, yeah. You got bench right here.
Oh, we do?
Yes, they can come up there.
Every time I go to walk that path, it's underwater, so. I, that is the first I've heard of that problem and I.
I mean, there's people that hunt in there and everything else. Nobody keeps anybody out there.
Well, nobody's there to protect.
Right, right. That's why I said.
My suggestion is.
They come in through there and then they come into our property.
Okay. Well, I can give you my phone number to call if you see someone or call the sheriff. We don't want.
We have called the sheriff many times. And they don't do anything because it isn't our property.
Oh. Well, call the sheriff and tell him they can confirm with me that I have a complaint. I mean, I'll cooperate with you. Fence isn't gonna stop thunder, it's, I mean, a small fence.
No, no, not some fence.
Um, so I, if you wanna talk afterwards, I'll work with you. This is the first we've heard of that problem, so.
It's been going on for quite a while.
Have you talked to anyone else about it? Oh. We'll put some signs up and, at least at the, we can put a sign up by where that bench is that don't go beyond this property. And like I said, I'll cooperate with you and with the sheriff and so they'll respond.
At this time, we'll take testimony from staff.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Anna Hertzman, senior planner. The subject property is currently zone A-one, which is consistent with the surrounding zoning in the area there. The surrounding lab uses is predominantly agricultural. You do have, as you get closer to Union, you're gonna get more and more of your population and your industrial qualifications. Future land use is designating this as a open space. Staff is recommending, I didn't, um, recommended conditions on here. We are recommending a total of three conditions. The first is our standard of ten years, from date of the county board approval. The second one is tying this conditional use to a site plan. And then the third is our standard that all other federal, state, and local laws shall be met. I do note that we had a couple of comments about potentially modifying the site plan. If the board so chooses, they can continue to say tie it to a site plan and we can leave it blank until the provision date.
That would work?
That would work.
Could you repeat those qualifications and I'll stand closer to you?
Not a problem, Jay. Okay, so there's three conditions.
Right.
Okay, the first is the standard of the ten years, okay?
Okay.
The second has to do with tying the conditional use to the site plan.
Okay.
And.
So any changes would require a new conditional use? So, any changes would require a new conditional use?
It has to substantially conform to it. Okay. So, whoever our next zoning coordinator may be, how they define a substantial conformance will be up to them. And then the third one is all federal, state, and local law shall be met.
But her proposal is we leave the date of the site plan that this is to conform to open, so they can fill it in when you've made the revisions. Okay.
That's a good question. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure. In leaving the date open, could we maybe change that to the final site plan as approved by the Soil Water Conservation District? Because then they would have changes to be, to make through the variance process because it's.
It's not Soil and Water that will approve it, though.
Okay. So, the variance that he's talking about is the county has recently established or reestablished a stormwater board. Okay? And the variance that you would be seeking is through our stormwater ordinance that will go to that board. Okay?
So, would it be possible to change the condition to reflect the final decision of that board, like tying this to that site plan? Because that would give you time to clean it up, and then it would be their final determination related to the size of the containment and all of that stuff.
Okay. So, may I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Okay.
He's up.
So, you have to get your variance through the stormwater board. Do you have a rough estimate of when that is going to occur?
Well, it's supposed to happen tomorrow, like the hearing, but it's not.
Okay.
They told me they got the plans too late, so now maybe September.
Okay, okay. The reason I'm asking that question is, once this board closes their hearing, action has to occur by the county board within 180 days. So, I just want to make certain that that was going to work out time-wise. It will, given what Mr. Fuller has just said. Okay. So, to answer your question, we can tie it to a site plan that is for, whatever the stormwater board approves, if that is what you would like to do.
We could also just continue this hearing until he gets that done.
You can certainly do that as well.
Would you like to do that, Jay? We could continue this hearing till you get this, this, the variation done. You could get the stormwater thing done, you could get your new site plan done, we'll approve the new site plan, vote on it.
So, the concern with the site plan is just the driveway and the?
Just the driveway, basically. That's the only thing that's, oh, and the, and it said that the whole property is in a floodplain. So, you wanted to make sure if that was, should be restated.
I guess.
If they continue though, wouldn't we have to pay for notice and all that, all of that?
Yeah.
This is, I mean, I, this is, you have to understand, and I've been working on this permit now for almost two years. And it tends to be kind of circular. We want this before we get this, and then they want this, the same thing that we're, so, I mean, if that's what your condition is, fine, and I'll comply. But the stormwater portion, I mean, even if you rezone this, it'll be rezoned in its current state. And we won't be able to do anything with it unless the stormwater people do what they're supposed to do. So, but whatever you prefer.
Well, and we could, I mean, the stormwater thing is going to happen no matter what. You have to do that variation. It's just getting the site plan changed. And if there's some question as to how we need to phrase that so it's satisfactory to everybody, if that's, you know, if you, you're not going to go to the county board till you get that stormwater variation, or we.
Correct.
So, I mean, it.
And then, and over the winter doesn't matter, so.
So, if you come back here in a month after you get stormwater and you make that quick correction, we could do this next month.
Okay, when's next month?
September.
I wasn't sure if you were talking about the end of August or?
Yeah, we have, we have pretty much every date in September except for the 5th open.
So, when is your hearing in September?
If it happens, it would be the 3rd.
Okay. So, any of those dates in September potentially could work.
And I have to check my schedule for September, because I know we're going out of town for a couple of weeks. The 5th, you have a, oh, you said except for the 5th. What's the first available date in September?
The 12th.
That's no good. So, let's just go to October.
Okay, we have any date in October available.
You mean the first one, first, first date?
The 3rd, I'm not here, but you could vote that.
Well, I don't know if I want to do it if you're not here.
Otherwise, you could do it the 3rd. Otherwise, you could do it October 10th.
Well, let's keep the same board that we have today, so.
Right. So, you want to, we'll continue this hearing until October 10th, and then you can get your site plan changed and we can vote on it at that time.
Okay. And I don't know which version of the site plan you're using. I stopped collecting them at about 10 or 12 of them, because that.
This one says the last revision date is June 14th, 2024. That's the one that we have.
Okay.
With the driveway that doesn't go all the way around.
Okay. All right. All right. Bring us one you want us to approve. I'm sorry? Bring us a site plan you want us to approve. Yeah.
Okay. So, at this time, this hearing is continued until October 10th at 1:30 in this room.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Oh, I guess I need a motion to that effect.
I'm so moved.
I'll say that. Moved by Mr. Eldridge, seconded by Ms. Gardner, to continue this hearing till October 10th.
1:30 PM, this room.
At 1:30 PM in this hearing room. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. So, this.
Well, thank you for your time.
We look forward to seeing you again.
You know, you just keep plugging away at this stuff and hopefully you get there.
So, the purpose is for a revised site plan.